I'd like to call to order the November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen council meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Councilmember LaCuro?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
And it will take us to our invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand? Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body, brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts, to listen in for your will for us, and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have in attendance tonight Judge Chuck Yedder from the forty-third District Court, Hazel Park Division, our own judge, who is here tonight to administer the oath of office to each one of you. Mayor Webb, will you please come forward to take the oath of office, please?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of these United States of America, this state, that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor, in and for the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, to the best of your ability? I will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Amy Aubrey?
Oh, I'm sorry. The mayor has to come back. You need to be faster. We'll go slower. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of these United States of America, the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member, in and for the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Alyssa Sullivan?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of these United States of America, this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member, in and for the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Andy LaCuro?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of these United States of America, this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member, in and for the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, and state of Michigan, to the best of your ability? I will. Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of these United States of America, this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member, in and for the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, and state of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, congratulations to each and every one of you on your election to the Hazel Park City Council. I look forward to working with you in the coming months to make the city of Hazel Park the very best city in the state of Michigan. So, congratulations.
Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you, and congratulations to the new members up here, and well-run. Thank you. And congratulations to my other colleagues that have been with me for a while.
Your Honor, through the chair, before my parents take off and head to Ortonville, thank you guys for coming down. Thank you.
If I may indulge you to join me at the podium, we have some honoraria to bestow on people who have given outstanding service to the city of Hazel Park. Would Mayor Jeffrey Keaton come forward, please? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to tell you that I've worked with a number of outstanding public officials in my tenure as city manager of Hazel Park, and I want to say that Jeff Keaton is certainly amongst the best public officials I have ever worked with, or ever had the pleasure of dealing with. I have known, I think, every city council member in the city of Hazel Park since nineteen eighty-one, and I want to say Jeff Keaton is clearly one of the best council members the city has ever had. We are privileged for your service, and I want to thank you. And on behalf of my mayor and council, I would like to present you with this small honoraria, as a token of our appreciation for your service.
Mayor Webb?
Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, that was Ed that you'd be checking the time for. Actually, thanks for the accolades, Ed. I appreciate that. And my granddaughter just said, what a good-looking council that is. And they're going to work as hard as they look, and they're good. And I appreciate having been able to serve nineteen years in an elected position in Hazel Park. It's been my honor, and I hope that I have contributed somewhat to the Hazel Park moving forward the way it has. And I appreciate every one of you and the public. Thank you very much.
Councilman Selman bravely agreed to join the Hazel Park City Council when we had a vacancy in two thousand fourteen, and he was a big part of our efforts to pass the S M A R S A billage, which really meant the difference between Hazel Park surviving as a community, or going into state receivership. Tom is a wise, deep-thinking individual who loves the city of Hazel Park, and he was certainly an effective and very important councilman. And on behalf of Mayor Webb and the members of the Hazel Park City Council, I would like to present you with this honoraria, as a token of the city of Hazel Park's appreciation for your outstanding service to our community.
You know, I cannot walk away from a microphone without saying something. As I sat out in the audience and observed the new council, I thought about something, and you five new, or five council members have already made history this evening, in that for the very first time, we have women in the majority on our city council, and our city is for the better. I thank you all for this recognition. I would just like to also remember that we should not forget and remember and recognize those who were candidates but were not elected, because they made the race interesting. And thank you to those folks, too. I have to say this evening that if you love somebody, you must tell them that you love them. And if you have children, you must hug them every day and tell them that you love them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And finally, City Clerk Mary Ann Geraldowski, will you please come up here? Residents of Hazel Park, Mary Ann Geraldowski's last day with the city of Hazel Park is tomorrow, and I really need to recognize her for the outstanding work that she has done serving the residents of this community. She's truly been a distinguished department head who always does her job with professionalism and a deep understanding of what it means to be a public servant. She is a role model for other department heads, and I always talk about how much I love her because she is drama-free. She simply comes in, and she gave the residents of Hazel Park an honest day's work every day that she was here, and I'm going to miss her every day. So, Mary Ann, on behalf of the mayor and council, the residents of Hazel Park, I want to thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for all the great work that you did for the city. We love you, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to past council, and congratulations, and good luck to this new council. Thank you very much.
And also joining us today, for those in the TV audience that didn't hear his entrance, is former Mayor Jack Lloyd. Welcome back to the city council chambers, Mayor.
Okay, I think that takes us to our next agenda item, now that we've congratulated everybody, and I think everybody's well-deserved of that, and I'm glad we have a wonderful audience, and it's nice to see everybody out and participating, as our former mayor would say, democratic process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
I would like to nominate for mayor pro temp, Amy Aubrey.
A hair of support?
Support.
Any dissension to the motion? Seeing none, motion approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the approval, approval of the agenda. A hair of motion for that, please.
Move approval of the agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor?
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Any dissension? And that will take care of the agenda for this evening. Public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Community Development Director Jeffrey Campbell is here to brief you on the allocation of the community development block grant dollars that we received through Oakland County, as a pass-through from the federal government.
Thank you.
I will point out to you that when I became city manager back in two thousand two, we used to get almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars in C D B G dollars. Now you see that it has dwindled down to the amount before you today.
At eighty thousand is what Oakland County provides for us this year. That is an estimate based on two years ago, and might go up a few thousand or down a few thousand, depending on when the money is allocated in the next year. I should note, and we just received the ability to spend two thousand seventeen dollars. We were also given, every community was given a slight bump. We received twenty-five thousand extra dollars, just over that, due to demolitions with those funds. So this year, we are looking at just over eighty thousand dollars for code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I get a motion, or any?
You need to open the public hearing?
Oh, yes, sorry. I got to open the public hearing. Thank you. I'm a little into this. Open a public hearing to the community development block grants. Anyone wishing to speak on the proposed requests? Seeing no one, that will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends approval of the attached ordinance and the allocation of the monies accordingly.
Do I have a motion from the council members?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Support, please?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do have several department heads in attendance today before we vote on the consent agenda, and I would like to recognize those folks here. We have Finance Director Lacy Christiansen, Code Enforcement Supervisor Pam Patterson, my Office Manager Linda Yono, Chief of Police, sporting his new beard, Ryan Buchholz. We have Joanne Hubs, our Treasurer, Jeff Campbell, Community Development Director, Chris Duberg, DPW Superintendent, Fire Chief Rich Story. We have Lisa Mayo from the City Clerk's Office, and we have Jared from my office, and then we have Annie McCollin, Lynn Sagan, Annette Smith, and Mary Ann Geraldowski, obviously. And have I missed anyone that's hiding? I want to thank all those employees for showing up here to see the new council be sworn in tonight.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate the support. Take us down to any resolutions. Is there any?
No resolutions tonight.
Civic announcements. I'll open up the floor for civic announcements. Does anyone have any civic announcements they'd like to come up with? I see Helene Zach here, our County Commissioner.
Good evening, and I want to congratulate everyone. It's wonderful to see you sitting there, and I look forward to working with you. Several things going on in the county. This Monday evening, from six to eight P. M. at the Cranbrook Science Center, there's going to be a water town hall meeting, and they're going to address things such as broken water mains, sewer infrastructure, service lines, septic tanks, and so forth. There will be four speakers, our Water Resource Commissioner Jim Nash, Kathy Forsley, the head of our Oakland County Health and Human Services Department, someone from Clean Water Action, and a civil engineer. And this is following, we did have a large water main break in Oakland County. Three hundred and four thousand residents were without water, so addressing that issue. I have heard, all of the commissioners have heard from countless people about septic tanks in Oakland County. Now, I don't have septic tanks in my district, but we have over a hundred thousand septic tanks in Oakland County, which is a lot, and about twenty-five percent of them go bad every year. We have a policy now that we don't inspect them, other than when there is a bill of sale. And so there is a study group that the Board of Commissioners has created to look at our code and our policy to change that, so there would be more inspections to prevent clean water in Oakland County, even though it doesn't work right here. I must have heard from at least a hundred and fifty residents in my district. I do want to remind those individuals, we did allocate money through Oakland County for new filtration water-drinking fountains, and I hope that in the elementary schools, and I placed a call, I hope that our schools will take advantage of that. What we did is we bought, we spent a half a million dollars buying these bulk water filtration systems to ensure that we can have clean drinking water in our Oakland County elementary schools. I also want to remind people that the Oakland County Clerk is traveling to our end of town, and they will be in Ferndale on November twenty-eighth, from ten to eleven-thirty at the Ferndale Library, two-two-two East Nine Mile. And you can get marriage license applications, certain things that you have to appear in person at the Oakland County office down in Pontiac. You can do now in Ferndale on that day. Finally, I'm going to leave some of these Oakland County shopper contest cards, and Small Business Saturday is following Thanksgiving, and we encourage people to shop locally, you know, and buy things there. And if you choose to shop locally, you can apply to win some prizes through Oakland County, and the directions for as much as five thousand, two thousand, five hundred, and it gives you directions. You have to demonstrate your bill of sale from your local business and apply, and you can win this prize. So I'll leave these up here. Any questions?
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helene.
Any other civic announcements?
Tonight, I'm here twofold, I guess. As a resident, so I'll announce my name. Rachel Noe, three-four-seven West Pearl Avenue. Congratulations, Dad.
Thanks.
For those of you who don't know what goes on behind the scenes of being a public servant, it's a lot of hours, it's a lot of time away from your family, and my dad has always told me, which may be why I'm an elected official, but to always think of others when you're a public servant. So, a word of advice to some of the new council members, I'm looking up here, this is bigger than all of us. So, best of luck to you. So, now, I'll switch over. Mrs. Hinton is in the office, in the audience as well, from the Board of Education. We have a couple civic announcements that is going on locally over here for the next month, as we all get really, really hyper about Christmas and Hanukkah and all those holidays are coming up, and Thanksgiving is next week, so if you haven't noticed that, I'm sorry. I just made Kroger's really busy with buying turkeys. So, holiday baskets, we're currently collecting canned goods until December eleventh in all of our buildings, so you can drop any canned goods off to any of our neighboring schools or our administration building located on six-twenty East Elza. We will be accepting applications until December the fourth. You can pick those applications up in any one of our schools and at our administration building. The senior concert is December tenth, and that will be at the Hazel Park Junior High from twelve o'clock until two P. M. There'll be Santa breakfast and a vendor craft show on Saturday, December second, from nine until one o'clock at the high school. There will be pancakes, sausage, crafts that are STEM-led, pictures with Santa, and that is all for a charge of five dollars. So hopefully, we can see everybody out there. Next week is the tree lighting, so if you already haven't drank your tea to warm up your vocals, go ahead and do that. So, if you have not made it over to the Hazel Park Library, there are currently trees that are decorated based from the community engagement team of the school district, and those trees have been decorated by various organizations and programs around the city, and they are actually really awesome, if you have not seen pictures. So what we're going to do with those is we're going to bid, there's a bidding process, right? We always got to think about how to generate some money for our after-school programming. So, we're actually going to be auctioning those off in a bid process on tree lighting night, which is next Tuesday. They will make their way from the library over to the ice arena for bid, and then you get to walk out with your tree. I'm going to put a little plug-in for the Hazel Park School Board tree. It's really cool. So, also at United Oaks, there's a vendor craft show this Thursday from three o'clock until eight o'clock at United Oaks Gym. Also, one of our board members, Kristy Schlock, wanted me to make an announcement on behalf of the Hazel Park Local Cub Scout Pack thirteen oh seven, that if you saw those bags on your door to collect cans, the scouts were actually able to collect one hundred and fifteen bags of donated food this weekend, and all those, all those bags get donated to cleaners, and this is part of their statewide scouting food program. So thank you for everyone who participated in that, and hopefully, we get to see you guys around at some of these school events, and hopefully, we can continue to work together as a city and a school district to benefit everyone who lives here, our children and our residents. So thank you, and I look forward to continuing that partnership.
Thank you.
Any questions? Did I go too fast with the dates? Okay, well, I have them here. Catch up for me later. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have State Representative Robbie Wittenberg.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I just, you know, I want to thank, now, former Mayor Keaton and former council member Selman, who's over here. I had the pleasure of working with them, and I know this can be a very thankless job. But you guys were here for the right reason, because you care about the community, and, you know, you wanted to see great things for the city of Hazel Park. So just want to thank both of you for all that you did for the city of Hazel Park. And Clerk Geraldowski, to thank you as well. Want to congratulate our new mayor, congratulate the council members that are coming back, and also congratulate the new council members. And I know you all are going to work together to continue moving the city forward. You know, Hazel Park is on the rise, that's for sure, and I know you all want to continue that, and I look forward to working with you. So if there's ever anything that I can do, please let me know, anything at a state level. Call me, email me, text me. You all should have my contact information. I'll make sure those of you at home that are listening, if you do ever need anything, I try to be as accessible as possible. Call me at five-one-seven-three-seven-three-zero-four-seven-eight. You can email me, robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. And then we also, we host coffee hours, or community conversations, every month. We actually just had one in Hazel Park either last week or the week before, had a really good discussion there. The next coffee hour coming up is in Huntington Woods on Thursday, December seventh, at seven-thirty P. M. at the Huntington Woods Library. So for anyone that wants to join there, please come by. It's always a good discussion. It's pretty informal, and invite anyone and everyone that wants to come out. And again, if you can't be there, feel free to call me and email me. But that's really it, in the interest of everyone's time. Just want to come congratulate all of you. Again, I look forward to working with all of you, and just know that I'm here as a resource for whatever you need. So, any questions? Anything you guys are curious about or need to know?
No.
Not yet.
All right. It's going to be like drinking from a fire hose to start for you. All right. It's going to be like drinking from a fire hose to start for you. But I know you two are up for the task. And you have, you know, a good, good team here to work with. So, anything that any one of us can do, you know, we're here for you. But I know you're going to do great things.
Appreciate it.
So, congratulations again to all of you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other civic announcements? Seeing none, they will close the civic announcements. We'll move to public discussion. Will anyone want to come up to the podium and have a discussion? Comments? Seeing no one? We'll close the public discussion. Take us down to the consent agenda. I'd like to see if we can have a motion for the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda items one through eight.
Support.
I have a support. Any dissension to the motion? Seeing none. Hey, that's, okay, thanks. Is there, on the consent agenda, the approval of the business license 107090 is Nine Mile for Motor City Athletic Club? Is there anyone here from that business? The license for the Generation Mobile of Hazel Park on 1833 East Eight Mile, is there anyone here for that business? We just approved your business licenses. Okay, that will take us down to the administrative reports. Approval of the care here inter-local sublease agreements that we've been working on for a while. And I believe the city manager has pretty much done it at this point.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is one more step in the process. Alicia Christiansen is here. She's our finance director. She's had a point on this particular project. For the viewing audience at home, what this is, is a cooperative effort between the cities of Hazel Park and Oak Park, which will be joining Ferndale, Madison Heights, and Royal Oak in this endeavor to provide health care at hopefully a cheaper rate for our employees and their families, thereby saving us money, increasing the employee and their family's convenience and access to health care, and hopefully encouraging them to be healthier in the process. So, we hope this will not only save the taxpayers of Hazel Park money, but will also result in a healthier workforce.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the administrative report, item one?
Move approval of the care here inter-local and sublease agreement, Mr. Mayor. Do I have a support?
Support.
Have a motion and support. Do we have any dissension to that, or discussion? Seeing none. Motion's approved. Takes us to any boards and commissions, or the council?
We have several applicants for commission. We will be bringing those applications to you in your LL packets this week. And hopefully, the administration will be recommending appointments at the next meeting. Also, please feel free to seek people who are interested in serving on boards and commissions. We always need volunteers, and we have vacancies.
Okay. Thank you. Tabled items, new business? Any new business council members?
Your Honor, I spoke briefly with Mr. Klobuchar prior to council. At the candidate debate or Q and A, it was brought up about truck traffic on residential streets. And the past couple of weeks, I've taken it upon myself to kind of sit and watch things, and it is an issue. They are tearing up some of our side streets, especially now with Eight Mile under construction. I'm seeing a lot of traffic coming up forward, and they can't get through. There's no left turn on Nine Mile. Same thing at Ten Mile. I don't know what the process is, if we need a traffic study, if the police department need to get involved, start writing tickets. I honestly don't want to see more signs around. Lord knows, we've got enough of those out there. But something does need to be done. And, and sometimes, it's real early in the morning, these trucks are coming through residential streets.
Okay. Chief Buchholz, take note of that, please, and instruct the traffic cars and the road patrol accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move on. Communication from the department heads. Do we have any communications from our department heads that are?
We actually do have a communication from Christopher Duberg here. He'll be explaining why it is not possible for us to create individual bike lanes on Woodward Heights due to the width of the road. But he will provide you the alternative solution, which we think will make things safer and be consistent with Ferndale across the board. Mr. Duberg?
The width of the road is not going to accept a dedicated bike lane. It has to be shared.
Need to speak into the mic so the rest of the?
The width of the road, Woodward Heights has three different widths, from Ferndale to Warren. And it won't accept a proper dedicated bike lane. So, my recommendation would be to go with the shared lanes, which is also parody to the other communities for this particular bike route.
So, what will we be doing on Woodward Heights? Is we will be creating a center turn lane. And then, we will have lanes, two-way traffic that will be larger and wider and able to accommodate both a vehicle and a bicycle, we think, with the safety, with a, a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. So...
Your Honor, through the chair. Mr. Duberg, would, would this be a good, appropriate time for possibly a green arrow at Woodward Heights and John R.? Because one of the issues with the trucks is they're turning down Carlisle to a dot, because they can't get through that, that light.
Yeah, that would be something that we'd have to go with the road.
Okay, thank you.
We'd have to approach them on that.
Thank you.
Because they maintain and service all of our traffic lanes.
Thank you.
We, we have actually had that before in the late 90s. And then, they ended up going back to this particular configuration. But with a dedicated left turn lane, we may have less congestion. So, we'll take a look at that. That will be a joint study project with Chris Duberg and with Chief Buchholz. And we may even bring in our traffic engineers on that to take a look at that. Hopefully, that will alleviate some of the congestion, but that's a terrible intersection. It just is.
It is an intersection.
It is. It's really not.
It's a good problem to have.
It is, it is a good problem, but it's too much traffic for too small an area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
One question, Chris, Chris.
Yes.
So, we've decided how it's going to be striped. How soon will that happen?
Um, now that we can give them the okay, in probably the next couple of weeks. We'll have to pick a day where it's semi-warm and the sun's shining, but it shouldn't be no problem.
Thank you.
And we've also instructed Mr. Duberg to begin laying the groundwork for the repairs to John R. and Nine Mile, as well as the resurfacing for John R. south of I-75. So, we're beginning that process now. We hope to bring a proposal to you after the first of the year for financing and for repairs and construction.
Thank you. That was a lot of work, Chris. Okay, takes us down to any?
Are there any other department heads? Chief Buchholz?
Sorry. Just have a couple of public safety announcements, I guess. With the colder weather, a lot of people want to warm up their vehicles in the morning. And I don't want to see people being an easy victim. So, if you have a vehicle that doesn't have remote start, and you go out there and start it and leave for 10, 15 minutes, you're going to be a victim. You could possibly be a victim. It did happen this morning. So, don't suggest leaving your car unlocked with the running, with the keys in it. Also, the holiday season, people are going to be shopping. Beware of your surroundings when walking around. Parking well the areas. And if you're going to have items in your car, try to keep them in the trunk or in ways that they can be hidden. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, Chief, congratulations. I've been, I've been trying to give you a little bit of time to settle in, but we need to sit down and talk about the watch program and building that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads want to come up? Seeing no one, and moves down to the communications from the city manager.
City Attorney, actually.
Oh, City Attorney, sorry. I think my glasses on.
I would just express my congratulations to all the new people that have been elected to council. Let you know, I've been around for probably 25, 30 years, and I have nothing but compliments to say about the city of Hazel Park. As small a community as it is, it is a major success. The efforts of everybody in this community are second to none. You hear about Bloomfield Hills and this one and that one. None of them compare to this community. And I just hope that you continue in the same mode that it's operated on for years.
Thank you, Ernie. Sorry, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, congratulations to each and every one of you. I really do look forward to working for you and with you to make Hazel Park, like I said, the best city in Michigan. We've got a lot of success to build on, and I can't wait to make some announcements very soon about some new projects that we have in the cooker. We're just waiting to get ink on the paper to do that. So, very exciting time to be part of Hazel Park. I want to first of all, thank the Sutar Sutaric Meyer Foundation for all of their assistance to the Hazel Park community. They recently awarded the Hazel Park Promise Own another $100,000 grant, plus $35,000 Challenge Match, which they will award in addition to the $100,000 if we can raise matching funds for it. So, I urge everyone to please make the Hazel Park Promise Own one of their charities that they donate money to. And finally, the foundation gave us $25,000 for the Police Reserve Auxiliary Program. So, that, those funds are badly needed. We are running out of individuals who want to volunteer their time to help the Hazel Park Police Department. So, if you had an interest in police work, but perhaps chose another vocation, but always wondered what it would be like to be part of a law enforcement operation, please consider joining our reserve unit. The information is on our website. I participated in that unit for 10 years. It was a great experience. I would strongly encourage anyone to take a look at participating in that unit. In that vein, Project Blue Light Memorial Service for Fallen Officers and First Responders will be at St. Justin's Church, 7:00 on Tuesday, December 5th. If you've never attended one of those ceremonies, I would urge you to attend this year. It's a very respectful and awe-inspiring ceremony where you really get to see firsthand the sacrifices that some people have made on behalf of the community. Please consider attending that important event. Finally, as Rachel mentioned, the lighting ceremony, November 21st, 6:15 p.m. at the Hazel Park Ice Arena. We will be having popcorn and hot chocolate and free skating for the kids after the event. So, please come out, see us. Welcome Santa Claus will be making an appearance at Hazel Park Arena. You will be landing over at the fire station and be transported via fire truck to the ice arena. So, please attend that. Again, thank you all very much. It's my pleasure. I serve it's your pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Communications from Councilmember Sullivan.
I would like to thank congratulations to my fellow new council members, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. I really look forward to working with all of you and continuing the progress that we've made. So, thank you.
Councilmember Holland.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's kind of cool to see standing room only. I didn't get a chance to, to point out, my folks left early. They drove all the way down from Ortonville to see me sworn in tonight. And, and I was proud to make them proud. And I'd like to thank everyone who worked on the campaigns, whether or not the candidates got in. People worked hard on this. And for everyone who came out and voted, I'm forever grateful to see you all out at the polls. I would like to congratulate Officer Tommy Porter on the new addition to his family. This is a fine, outstanding young officer who is a veteran. And I don't think boot camp or the academy could have prepared him for the first diaper, but he welcomed his son, Jack, at eight, let's see, eight pounds, 14 ounces, 20 and a, 21 and a half inches long. Mom is still talking to him. So, congratulations, Officer Porter. And let's see, the Hazel Park Historical Museum will be open this Thursday. That's going to be the 16th of November, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's several new acquisitions there, and some, some pretty cool stuff from Harmony House has just been acquired as well. Thank you all again for coming out tonight. You have a great evening.
Councilmember Lucero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you for the outstanding service to the city of Hazel Park, to Mary Ann Geraldowski, Jeffrey Keaton, and Tom Selman. It's been an honor to work alongside you, a pleasure to learn from you, and I wish you all well in your future endeavors. And I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and participating in the democratic process.
So, Mayor Protem Aubrey.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, showing their support. It was a, a great election season. Congratulations to everyone that's sitting up here with me. I'm glad to see so many people in the audience, and I hope to see more of you continue to join us at council meetings. And I look forward to serving you and, and doing the best that I can.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to Mary Ann for her professionalism as a city clerk for all the years of service she's committed and given to the city of Hazel Park. And good luck in your endeavors and your retirement. I think you'll be busier in retirement than you were working, as most retired people have told me. But I also would like to say thank you to my former and esteemed colleagues, Jeffrey Keaton and Tom Selman. Thank you for your outstanding work effort, professionalism up here. And I had a lot of good memories and a lot of fun up here with, working with you, and how trying to make the city move in a positive direction over the years. And I'm not going to forget about Jack Lloyd sitting over here, too. He's, he was another member up here when I first got elected. He also has committed his life to helping our community as residents. We have a commitment here. Let's work together. It's what we are. This is our home. Let's take care of it. I do want to say thank you, too, and congratulations to our members up here. I think we'll have a great council. We just have to work a little harder, I think, try to get through some of the projects we have coming into the city. I think that we have a little work ahead of us. And again, thank you for coming out. Do we need an exec session?
You do not need an exec session. What I do need from you, though, I'll be contacting you all tomorrow. Are some dates to do kind of a lengthy study slash orientation session with the new members. I'll try to bring the department heads, perhaps Monday, the 27th. Take a look at that as a potential target day. That's not etched in stone, but might work if that works for all five of you. If not, we'll pick a different day. But I would like to have that so that you can get a deeper understanding of what we are working on. I think it'll be beneficial for everybody. So...
I do want to add one more thing. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And have your families over and enjoy and have a good time. I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Any dissension today? I don't think so. Have a good evening.